All right, so thank you, everybody, for joining us on the October 25th regular meeting of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission. For everybody's reminder, it looks like we don't have any, excuse me, general members of the public here tonight. But for anybody who watches later, this meeting is obviously being audio and video recorded. If folks have questions about the proceedings tonight or any of the information shared, they can certainly get in touch with the Planning and Development Office Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, at 860-444-5813, and we can assist with any questions. It looks like we've got Kevin Arl coming in as well. And with that, Greg, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, item number one, call to order appointment of alternates. Looks like we have a full slate here. I do, when I switch the screen, I see Bert here too. Bert, you're here?
I am. Sorry, I gotta figure out how to get my face up there.
That's okay. I see you. Just you're the one that goes onto the second screen for me. So we have a full contingent of members. So tonight you'll be an alternate. Item number two, approval of the October 11, 2022 special meeting minutes. Have motion to approve those? Anyone?
Make a motion to approve the October 11 special meeting minutes.
I'll second Karen.
Made by Ken, seconded by Karen to approve the October 11, 2022 special meeting minutes. All favor?
Hi.
I oppose. No one opposed. Okay. Application receipt is item number three, PL-22-16. Application of the Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the Waterford zoning regulations, Section 1 definitions cannabis establishments, and 3.24 prohibition of cannabis establishments.
Yeah, this application is in order for receipt. Excuse me, we have a schedule for a public hearing on November 15th, and that will be at 6:30 in the auditorium in town hall.
The auditorium, right, where we usually, right, okay.
Yep.
Great. And that date is when?
November 15.
November 15, okay, great. Item number four, plan of conservation, preservation, conservation, and development discussion with consultant FHI Studio Inc. Update on public outreach, including pop-up virtual and in-person workshops, update on online survey and interactive mapping results, and next steps for the plan. So welcome, Rory.
Great. Hi, everybody. Hopefully you can see my screen up there. So this is our fourth meeting, and I know it's been a little bit since our last meeting, and we just wanted to provide an update. We've done quite a bit since the last meeting. That includes, you know, our pop-up at the Harvest Festival. We did hold a virtual workshop as well as an in-person workshop, and we wanted to give you an update, you know, on our online survey findings and that interactive mapping tool. Then we wanted to talk a little bit about next steps as we go forward throughout the fall. So, as I mentioned, just a public outreach update. So we did attend, Mark and I both attended the Harvest Festival on October 8th. You know, it was a great opportunity. We talked to many residents. We were able to promote the plan, the workshops and the online survey. You could tell this was definitely an event that was targeted to, you know, young families. We did talk to quite a few people that hadn't been in town too long, you know, kind of in the five-year range. A lot of young kids. Really great to kind of speak to people, talk to them about, you know, their thoughts and ideas for the town, and then just get the word out there that this was happening. I think we had some good, great feedback from people. Oh, this is really important. It's great to, you know, come out to community events like this, where people don't necessarily expect something like this, but they can kind of talk and then talk about their town. And there was quite a few people, I will say, from neighboring communities, places like New London, Niantic, East Lime, and they kind of talked about the great things about Waterford, you know, highlighting just the beautiful beaches and just the, you know, we were down at the Waterford Beach Park. So it was, you know, a beautiful day, a little bit chilly, but really, really a nice day. And they talked about all the great open space resources that are here in town. That being said, you know, all the people we talked to at the pop-up, we had very low attendance at both the virtual and the in-person workshop. You know, we were really hoping for a better turnout. For the virtual workshop, we did have a discussion. We had some few comments from the group, kind of focusing on really the need for bike and pedestrian infrastructure in town, kind of safety walking. There was some residents, one, I believe, with bike advocate, who, you know, mentioned kind of the need for more, you know, kind of consideration for bike lanes, trails, et cetera. And then, you know, a woman that did live, I think she lived off of 213, kind of down by the water. You know, she thought that the need for, you know, more sidewalks and connectivity in town was pretty important. Then for our in-person workshop that was held last Tuesday, you know, we got into some topic-based discussions with the group, and I'll go through those now. So the first, you know, we had these images to the right or just some screenshots of the boards that we had throughout the room in the in-person workshop. And the first topic was, we kind of lumped them together, but public facilities, infrastructure, land use, and transportation was one that we kind of talked about in unison. And, you know, the major themes that we heard was really the need to implement concepts from the Civic Triangle Plan. You know, people were familiar with it. They thought it was great, but they just thought the implementation was really lacking. We did hear the need for some more recreation facilities. Pickleball was highlighted as well as frisbee golf. We heard that, you know, this, Waterford has such great open space resources, and frisbee golf is something that attendees really thought would be a good, good asset for the town. You know, Crystal Mall came up quite a bit, identified as maybe a potential community center in the central location in town, maybe a recreational facility. We heard that, you know, there's a lot of old infrastructure in some of the areas, so some updates are needed. And again, we heard, you know, limited sidewalks and shoulders and the need for better public transportation in town as well. And I will say, if, you know, if anybody has any questions, please stop me. I'm just gonna go through what we heard, and then I can kind of talk about what we're, what we're thinking for next steps here. But so with that, so the next topic we covered was open space and conservation. And the group didn't really get into this too much, just, you know, the need to protect Waterford's natural resources. We heard about how great the beach and the coastline was, and really the need to protect that resources. And then opportunities, you know, to look for more areas to have community gardens that came up quite a bit. They thought that was something that would be great and a good way to include both seniors and younger kids as well as kind of some kind of community garden program. Then the next topic, we lumped together cultural and historic resources with community character. And we heard that, you know, the town should consider working with a preservation consultant, and that, you know, many people don't know about all the town's great historic resources. And also, you know, look for opportunities for adaptive reuse, reuse. And this came up when talking about the Kohanzi School and some other properties. But then also, you know, the town should be more forward-thinking, you know, send out more RFPs for the Kohanzi School. And then also, we heard that, you know, we have an idea that a maintenance plan is really needed for some of these historic properties. The feeling was that generally, they kind of, maintenance is lacking, and they kind of go downhill quickly. And then the Jordan Park House was an example of this as well. So talking about sustainability and resiliency, you know, the need to anticipate and plan for climate change came up. Waterford's a coastal community. You know, we know that there's many homes in coastal areas that are vulnerable to flooding that we've seen in the past. We also heard, you know, there's, and we know this too, that, you know, there's lots of impermeable pavement here, better drainage is needed. Maybe the idea to consider some kind of green infrastructure, things like rain gardens. We did see, you know, that terrible drought this summer, you know, maybe a way to kind of capture and prepare for drought events like that. And then, you know, the need that, you know, tree trimming should be maintained along roadways. And, you know, they noted that they thought the Department of Transportation did a pretty good job on the state roads, but also just, you know, throughout towns, and then it can be considered of so that, you know, residents don't get stuck if a tree comes down and go away, things like that, you know, during these storm events. So when we discussed housing, you know, the need for more affordable housing came up, but, you know, the topic kind of went to, you know, we should define what's affordable for Waterford, not just what the state says, you know, how can we ensure that, you know, teachers, policemen, firemen can afford to live here? And then, you know, the idea that, you know, the town really should try, should aim to implement goals from the Affordable Housing Plan. Also heard, you know, really need to go to planning and zoning and require a minimum number of affordable units for all developments that came up. And I think we did hear that at the pop-up to Mark. I think you probably know who said this. And then also, you know, the need for short-term rental regulations came up, you know, things like Airbnb rentals, things like that. And, you know, the discussion, also, we talked about accessory dwelling units, you know, then considering, you know, the ideas for considering allowing ADUs did come up. And then the Crystal Mall was mentioned again as a potential location, you know, for some housing. They are kind of in a central location, close to highway access, things like that. And we also talked about economic development. The feeling that we heard was that, you know, the town's historically been pretty friendly to chains and big-box retail, but not so much the smaller businesses. You know, people that attended the in-person workshop, kind of, they said, you know, should encourage more local retail, things like mom-and-pop stores, restaurants. Crystal Mall was mentioned again, mixed-use development was brought up, housing, maybe the community center, and also some recreational uses were discussed for that as well. And then the idea to really, you know, capitalize on Harkness. You know, it was brought up that, you know, a lot of people go to Harkness for weddings. They go during the day. It's a beautiful place. But, you know, people leave town right away, and the thought was that you really need to capitalize on this, this resource. And, you know, when people come to visit Harkness, get them to stay and spend money in Waterford, and give them options for spending their money in the town. So that, those were all the topics that we went through. And, you know, I just want to say, Abby and I and Mark talked after this, and, you know, with the disappointing turnout, we think, you know, it was, the first pop-up we attended was really great. We talked to quite a few people. And so maybe our strategy is going to shift a little bit and try and attend more pop-ups, you know, go to where the people are, get out there to them. And we'll, you know, we'll still plan on doing that final workshop, sort of more toward the end of the process where we go back and say, hey, you know, this is what we heard. Did we get it right? Or are we missing things? But just, you know, an opportunity to get out to more events, I think, will be really helpful. And so we have a couple of events highlighted, and, you know, we're open to, you know, considering other, other community events, if you all know of anything. But Abby and I did talk about the tree lightings. There's going to be one on both December 2nd and the 3rd. I think that's a Friday and a Saturday night. So that seemed like a good opportunity to get out there as well. I know Bert on the commission mentioned, you know, maybe go in a Stop &amp; Shop, maybe go in Aldi. And I was on the town's website today, and I saw an announcement about the transfer station. I was like, oh, that's a good opportunity. At least, you know, you're getting Waterford residents at the dump. So maybe something like that. And we also, you know, at the pop-up, we had a board similar to what you see on the screen. It's actually that, that kind of image in the middle there. That's some of the, just a photo of some of the post-its we got, you know, at the pop-up. And so, you know, we think that leaving, you know, a stationary board, so that the image to the right that has the kind of the directions on it, you know, asking people, hey, tell us what you think. Leave, leave some post-it note feedback. So we'll leave, you know, an actual board up on an easel with post-its and markers at the library. We'll leave one at the senior center. It also has links to the website and QR code where you can go right on and get on there and take the survey as well. So just kind of generate more, more interest in the survey, more interest in, you know, the plan overall as well. So that's something that we're gonna, gonna try this with this next phase. Okay, so I just wanted to pause there, and, you know, does anybody have any questions, any thoughts before I talk about the online survey?
I think just one, one just sort of plug for helping to encourage community participation. You know, we, well, we'll talk about the online survey results and the numbers that we've been able to capture so far. But, you know, I think for reference, I think we were into the 900s for respondents in the previous POCD, and we're less than 200 now. And so I think, you know, at this point in the project, I think it's important to see where commission members can reach out to their networks. We'll be doing some more blasting out to social media and all that kind of stuff, trying to drive people to take the surveys, to get involved, you know, to speak when they see us at events and stuff. But I think it would be great to have some help from commission members through your networks. You know more people than we do in town, and I think that folks will trust and listen to, you know, your requests to come participate and have their voices heard. So anything that folks can do to help spread the word is going to be a big help, even if it's just sharing the website with, with the folks in your lives. I think it'd be great.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Abby. Yeah, we, you know, it was all, it was up on the patch. It's all over the town website. We left photocopy flyers around town, library, the senior center, at some of the businesses. As I said, we, you know, we talked to people at the pop-up. So yeah, whatever we can do to kind of get more responses would be awesome. So when we looked, you know, we'll leave the online survey open, you know, as long as we need to. And I just wanted to provide some highlights here. So this one question, you know, obviously, there was quite a few question, quite a few different questions in the survey, and I just picked some, some kind of highlights just to show you here. And, you know, when asked, you know, what are the primary reasons you choose to reside in Waterford? Safe community was really identified as the top reason. You know, we, we asked, you know, do you own your own home? Do you rent? Just to try and get a sense of, you know, how sort of, how long people have been in the community, how invested they are. And, you know, most people that we heard from own their own home. I think it was 95% or some, something close to that. And then we kind of asked about geographic area, you know, where, where do you live? Where are you coming from? In the Great Neck, I think we decided to go with school districts. I mean, that, in that area was, you know, getting the greatest number of responses. So what about Waterford? Do you value the most, you know, overwhelmingly beaches and the coastline? And I read through some of the, a lot of the, you know, kind of individual responses, and people just called out beaches over and over again. Parks and open space was up there, public safety, town services again. And then, you know, for that, that other category, we did get some, some feedback, you know, the library. Love to see more local businesses, you know, would love to have a downtown. And again, public safety volunteers were specifically called out, and then the Old Neil Center. So I guess that's the complex there, in the housing, and that, you know, that Waterford Beach Park, I imagine, is what they refer to with that. So again, how long have you lived in Waterford? Over 20 years. That was the most, most responses we got. And, you know, some people under five years taking that, which is great as well, newer residents. You know, where do you see yourself living 10 years from now? And most people said Waterford. And, you know, some people said, not sure, outside of Connecticut, in Connecticut, but a different town also in there. But, you know, the majority said in Waterford. And so this question, please select the statement that best represents your thoughts about Waterford. This is kind of just, we try and do this just to see temperature for change, you know. And so, first one, I like Waterford now. Keep it like it is. I think Waterford should continue to grow and change, but incrementally, and that's the one that got kind of the most responses. And then also, you know, I think Waterford should be open for significant growth and change. And then we did leave an answer for other, and, you know, things like the historic characteristics, so it should be highlighted. Don't need any more dollar stores. And that was something that we did here at the workshop as well. You know, more opportunities for pedestrian and cycling options. Try and reduce the car dependency here in town. Improvement of facilities, but, you know, balance with respect for the natural environment. And then the thought that, you know, Waterford could accommodate growth without sacrificing its beauty. You know, we could be more interactive, and, and we could be, do more with neighboring communities such as New London as well. So the question was, what should the town focus more of? And, you know, we heard about 66% of respondents said, you know, improving specific areas, the Crystal Mall, Civic Triangle, Route 85 Quarter, Mago Point, you know, so that one came in, got the most responses. And then protection of natural resources, trails, greenways, passive recreation areas. Those got quite a few responses as well. Then, you know, we, we took this and turned it around. What should the town focus less on? And affordable housing came up. About 23% said affordable housing. Then none of the above, that, that choice came up. And I think, you know, when I went back through, I was like, what does that really mean? And that was, you know, when you're saying less, you're saying don't focus on it. And I think, I think 22% of people that took the survey thought all those, all these things, you know, should be focused on. And then improving municipal buildings was also something that people said, you know, the town should focus less on. So then I just wanted to talk about project schedule and next steps, but we can take a pause and, you know, kind of discuss some of this stuff, what you're thinking. Anybody have any questions? All right, well, I'll move on, and we can do some questions toward the end. So our next sort of task in kind of our gathering feedback is what we call stakeholder meetings. So we'll be doing six of those, and you'll see the topics kind of mirror what the different topics were that I just went through. So the first one will be, you know, with public facilities, infrastructure, land use, and transportation. So we think, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, in what I, these key stakeholder meetings, what they'll be is, you know, a virtual meeting where a representative from each of these different groups is on, and we do a very brief, maybe, you know, five-slide, 10-slide presentation, and then kind of go through some questions, you know, what can the town do to help your, your department or your group? What, you know, what are your needs? What are your issues? What, what ideas do you have to move forward some of your, you know, programs or goals, things like that? So really, just an open discussion with each of these kind of topic areas in mind. So as I mentioned, the public facilities, land use, infrastructure, you know, that's represented as like the library, traffic authority, fire department, youth and family services, building department. Next meeting, you know, we kind of see, we're grouping them kind of together topically. So open space, environment, conservation, and, you know, people like Conservation Commission, parking rec, the shelf fish management. And these, these kind of stakeholders that I list to the right are kind of ideas at this point. You know, we can continue to add and tweak these as we, as we start to schedule these meetings. So the next one, cultural and historic resources, community character. So we're reaching out to Historic Properties, Design Review Board. I did see that the Mago Point has an ad hoc committee for redevelopment there. So then the next topics, sustainability and resiliency. So we'll be talking the Flood Erosion Control Board, Waterford Sustainable CT Group, maybe the Harbor Management Commission, the Energy Task Force, housing, you know, reaching out to the Housing Authority. Maybe there's other, you know, groups focused on housing. Maybe it's Senior Center. And then Economic Development, you know, groups like Economic Development Commission, Chamber of Commerce of Eastern Connecticut. And as I said, you know, these, we're still flushing these out. These were just some thoughts about who, you know, we kind of invite to these different meetings as well. So then, just talking about, you know, our next steps, we'll be doing, we're hoping to hold these stakeholder interviews in November and December. I did mention, you know, doing the additional pop-ups, December 2nd and 3rd. And then we're gonna, what we're gonna do is get into, I will, I will say, our next meeting, I think it would be on the schedule is November 29th. I'm not going to be here. So what we might do is maybe provide Mark with a couple of slides, you know, an update, how we're doing with the online survey, that sort of thing. And we also looked, and I think the following meeting for that is the week between Christmas and New Year's. And I, I know that Abby and Mark and I didn't think that that, maybe, maybe that's one that we kind of consider not holding. But then to kind of get back to it in January and do what we're gonna, what we call, you know, the topic-based discussion. So basically, each of the meetings, we'll, we'll pick a set of topics and really delve into them. And what this allows is, you know, we'll hold those interviews with the different stakeholders, November and December, so that we can come back to you with the feedback from those meetings, you know, what we heard, what we heard from our outreach and the online survey, and, you know, how it all kind of layers together, and then talk to you like, hey, this is what we heard. We'll fill in the gaps, you know, what, what are we missing? Would, you know, do you have any, any thoughts that, that will kind of influence and help guide this topic of the plan? So that's sort of where we see the schedule kind of going at this point, just given, you know, the, a lot of, I think you have, I sound like you're pretty busy this fall, and with the kind of transition with Abby, it seemed to make sense. And so I think with that, opening up for questions and thoughts, anything? Anybody else?
Hey Rory, I got a couple of questions for you or comments. Have we, have we tried to reach out to the, I know we had talked about the school system and maybe doing something within maybe the civics or something to do with the kids in school and high school was one statement comment. The other is, have we done anything on Facebook or any kind of outreach through? I know the Waterford community on Facebook is pretty active with a lot of people when they, when something gets thrown up there. It seems like there's a lot of respondents through that. So those may be two ways we can get more participation, it seems.
Yeah, thanks, Ken. So, yeah, we, that, that is something that Abby and I actually talked about today too, as we're, we're setting up those sort of stationary boards in the, the library and the senior center. You know, we, we, something we could certainly do at the high school as well. Also, you know, thinking about, maybe what it is, is maybe I, or maybe Mark and I, or maybe we go and set up at the high school and during the different lunch waves, talk to kids. I've done that in other communities. So that's something that we consider if we have a, you know, a contact at the school, say, hey, you know, can, can we set up shop on one of the lunchroom tables and really just talk to kids? And, you know, hand out some flyers and say, you know, what do you like? What do you don't like? What needs to change? I think that's definitely something worthwhile to explore. And I will say, I'm happy to do that, definitely, if, that, you know, generates some interest and gets people talking to us, then it'd be helpful. And then back to your, your question about the Facebook, it would be great if we could have, get some help with that. We did make, make a Facebook post that kind of, that kind of covered the, you know, the different events we were doing. And I know it was, I think, Mark, it was up on the, on the First Selectman's Newsletter. We did reach out personally, FHI did, to try and get that up on some of, we had identified some Facebook groups and didn't have a great response. So we got it up on the patch, the Waterford Patch. I don't know how many people use that. But if, if, if Ken, if you're on, you know, in a Facebook group and you could share, you know, a Facebook post, that would be great. We, we did talk about, you know, these, I mentioned the, doing these, we're gonna be doing these stakeholder interviews, November and December. But we talked about, you know, as we go forward with our next meetings, you know, that, what kind of the topic-based meetings that are really focused on, you know, a set of topics, maybe the last 15 minutes of that, we open it up and say, you know, kind of advertise that, you know, hey, you know, you want to hear about housing, join this, come on to this planning and zoning meeting related to the POCD and share your thoughts. And that's something that we could quickly and easily make, you know, a quick little snappy like Facebook post if we, you know, hey, want to talk about how, you know, exactly that? What do you think about housing in Waterford? Join us on this date. So that's something we could do if, you know, if we have those ins. Like I said, we did reach out to some of those groups and didn't have great response, getting stuff posted on there. But if you all, if you guys as members of, you know, the Waterford community have those ins, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Rory, who are the stakeholders?
So those stakeholder interviews. Let's see. So these would be kind of who we're thinking of as stakeholders. And as I mentioned, these are totally, you know, open for discussion at this point. We're still kind of putting together this list. If there's, you know, other people that we should add, that certainly happy to do that. I think, you know, Abby and I and Mark, you know, just started kind of working through this list. So at this point, this is still totally open, and I think the thought was to, to get this group's feedback on those, right, Abby? And kind of sign off before we start scheduling some of these, these meetings.
Yeah, we want, we want to make sure we don't miss anybody. We want to make sure that, you know, we, you know, certainly the folks who are serving on various boards and commissions, and we'll get a schedule out to folks like RTM members and Port of Finance members and that kind of stuff. But we want to make sure that if there's particular groups, like some of the, you know, watershed folks, and, you know, say, you know, there's, there's groups out there that we know, you know, need to, you know, community organization groups that need to be on here as well. So I think what we want to do is just take a look at these categories and say, okay, who else? Who are we missing? Who should we invite? We know not all of them will come, but if folks can send a single representative, you know, that, that helps. And so that's really what we're trying to do is get really well-rounded discussions on these issues.
I think that we should probably send
I think that uh, we should probably send out those, but how many screens is there? Two or three screens?
So, yeah, there's two. So we will be doing six of these meetings. So like here, public facilities, infrastructure and land use, transportation. You know, we could have, you know, for sake of time and just kind of what we're scoped. You know, we're grouping these together because we think they have like like-minded interests. So, you know, people like. Fire, police, EMS, um, youth and family services, community center representative, you know, people like that. Coming together and kind of talking through. And so we'll make sure, you know, that the questions aren't so specific. That, you know, somebody feels like they're being left out of the discussion, but I I think. Um, you know, it'll be a great opportunity for for to hear from these stakeholders as well as. Them to hear from each other and get a, get a sense of like what the other groups' needs are. Um, as well. So it's usually, usually good, effective. And, you know, we try and keep them, you know, between eight and like twelve people. Um, just to make sure that it, there's, you know, enough time to get through. And I think they're usually, you know, usually ninety minutes is what we try and. Try and shoot for, and we'll we'll plan on doing these virtually, um, if that, if if scheduling allows.
Yeah, what's what's important here too is that, is that the stakeholders really are the ones that will be benefiting from the plan of development after it gets. It gets adopted. These are the, this is, this is the plan that they will use to, uh, you know, request funding, request improvements, things like that. So. Uh, certainly within their, in their best interest as well to be involved, involved in these uh, stakeholder discussions.
And it. Some of the things identified in the plan, they'll be asked to implement various portions. They gotta have buy-in now, if we're gonna ask them to do something like.
That's what I was gonna say, it'll help us with implementation.
Well, I just quickly, I mean, I didn't see the first selectmen. Does Rob have any input in any of this, or is he kind of stay silent?
The the Board of Selectmen, similar to the RTM and um, Board of Finance and sort of those overarching groups, I think. Um, would sort of have broad invites to come and sit in on any of these as 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 well as they, you know, they've gotten invites for, um. You know, the workshops and and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, we'll keep getting information to them and then hopefully drive them to the website and, you know, the schedule once the. The the topics are set and the invitation lists are set, they'll also be posted online. They're gonna be publicly, even, you know, folks can certainly attend these meetings. Um, you know, and offer more more information as well. So there's, there's times, you know, there'll, there'll be ways for everyone to participate. Um, though. You know, I think something for for Mark and Rory going forward, you know, certainly as things shape up, yes, the the first selectmen is is one. Key piece, but we want to make sure that it's, um, that we're also basing things on, you know, sort of a holistic view and not a single. Set of issues or agendas or other pieces. So we want to make sure that it's it's a voice and it's important. And also, you know, the current elected, I mean, all the current elected officials are, you know, have an important voice. Um, we want to make sure that we we balance and and kind of get everybody.
Well, I, I mean, if we can send these two couple of slides to us, I think it's important for us to look at it. Like, I I'm looking at housing and we have Housing Authority. One, we don't have a housing authority, but two, I think we need to have the the developer, like Kevin Daly, who's developing a lot of the housing. He he should be invited to participate. In, you know, the sustainability and resiliency, we have the Harvard Management Commission, but what about? Fishermen or somebody who runs one of the fishing boats down in Megal Point or, and, you know, one of the other slides, we have. Um, you know, the Board of Education, or what about the parent of the the parent teacher organizations? You know, the the people actually need to be represented as well. These look like all government agencies to me. I get a little worried when the government just takes over everything and says, you know, we're here to help. And where's the public participation? I think we need to have key people from the public, like, instead of the Parks and Recreation Commission, that's great too, but what about the head of the Little League? We need to hear from him. And so, you know, so we need to, we, I think that as as commissioners, we should probably have. These six different areas, and maybe we can come up with some people that. Might help, not just the Chamber of Commerce, but maybe one of the business, one of the bigger businesses in town, something like that. That's where we're really gonna get some meat and potatoes, information if they're personally invited to. Attend this meeting and give us their thoughts. If that's in my opinion. But I'd like to see slides so we can kind of fill in some of those blanks.
Yeah, so I'll, I will say, um, I did, uh, just send this list, you know, over to Abby and Mark today, so they haven't had a chance to chime in and kind of. Check everything here, um, but definitely, yeah, we'll we'll get that over to you folks. And that was, you know, we we had discussed that earlier, that, you know, we definitely want. You guys to chime in and tell us, you know, who we're missing, and, you know, how kind of this grouping should go, because, you know, I included the. Waterford Shelffish Management in, you know, open space, environment and conservation, um. And then, you know, looking at this, the Harbor Management Committee and Sustainability and Resiliency. So it's kind of just the, the. And maybe they get invited to both of those, you know, so it, that will be helpful. And the Housing Authority, I was, I was like, I don't see a Housing Authority when I was. Doing some research, so that was why that had a question mark. But yeah, certainly, anybody, you know, any groups that you think would be, you know. Beneficial and would would um, like to be involved, that would be great.
And I think too, we can get this out to you tomorrow, and then, you know, I think because of the. That November, December timeframe and wanting to set you guys up to be able to, um. Come back in in January, the, you know, the the mid-January, second meeting in January, early February timeframe. To talk about this stuff again, um, it would be great to have your feedback on this list. Um, I would say, you know, early next week would be ideal, so we can start, you know, inviting folks, scheduling. It's gonna start to get compressed. And so, um, you know, just for just time management purposes, it would be good to have that feedback as quickly as you're able.
Great.
I mean, you know, Mark directly, um, it doesn't have to, it's, you know, certainly we don't want to, you know, violate the meeting laws and all that kind of stuff. But if you, if you send something directly to to Mark and and Rory, I think you'll be in good shape.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from anyone?
Yeah, this is Bert. Can I just, can you go back to the 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 pop-up page? Um, yeah, you just had it. The, you know, the future one. So. I'm strongly in favor of of additional pop-ups. I highly question. The tree lighting ceremony, unless things have changed a lot. I was president of the Lions Club years ago. I did, I helped flip the switch, so to speak. There wasn't. More than twenty-five or thirty people, unless there's something special going on where you're busting people in. You're gonna get such a small cross-section. I I guess, I really want to kind of go back. I I know, you know, you put the stop and shop thing, and I'm I'm, I I don't care whether that happens or doesn't happen, but. Going to a basketball game or a football game or the soccer field, um, someplace where you get a big cross-section of people. Um, I think would be a whole lot better to complement the sort of get the word out things with Facebook and stuff. Um, so. I guess, I'm just concerned that that these little small spot things that sound good, but don't actually have a lot of attendance. Um, we're not gonna get our bang for the buck for that. And so that's just, you know, one person's opinion.
Thanks, Bert. Yeah, we're open and totally flexible. If 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 the group thinks, you know, these tree lightings are not, not great, I think. The thought about doing both of them was that the, I think the Friday night one is the whole town one. Um, and then Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, it was the Quaker Hill on the third. Um, but yeah, I mean, we're totally flexible, and I like the idea of the sports games, like before the, um. Harvest Festival pop-up, I actually happened to be, um, watching a field hockey game in 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 Waterford. We were playing. Waterford and I, I looked over and I saw all these, um. These parents in the stands on the Waterford side, and I was like, oh, if I only had my flyer, I'd go and hand them out, because you know that this is, you know, kind of a group that. You know, I would think would be invested in the community, you know, here they are watching their kids play field hockey. So I think that's, that's a great idea. And if that, you know, if I don't know. You know, how, what the, um. You know, the attendance, if 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 there's a good game, we could, I, we could kind of identify. And maybe that's something when we reach out to the school and see if we can kind of get in there. Um, during a lunch or to to set up some kind of board, maybe that's something we can ask, uh, who, a contact, the contact that we reach out to at the schools. Hey, you have a. A big game coming up, what would be, you know, something good for us to attend?
Yeah, I, I, the other side to that is is is. Things may have changed, and that I I hope they have changed since I was in school. But I remember the rotations of lunch when I was in high school, and I can guarantee you. No matter how noble your, your goal was, I wouldn't have had the time of day, and I was in such a rush. To get food down so that I could get. Sadly, to gym class after lunch, um, uh, or gym class. Consumed most of the lunch period, but just because of the way it worked. I don't know what it's like in Waterford. It might turn out that that's not actually such a great time to be canvassing folks in there. Maybe it'd be, it'd be good to get, um, some input from the folks that are overseeing the lunch operation. Um, again, I I'd I'd like to see us get the most. Out of these exercises. And I mean, it's, it's a, it's a chunk of your time as well, and 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 I can only imagine it being super frustrating. To make a good faith effort to do something and find out that people just, they want to wave to you as they're going to what they have to do.
Yeah, um, I will say, we did something similar, um, a couple of weeks ago at a high school in Connecticut, and we brought free candy. And, you know, that was very enticing for the kids to come up and talk. So bribery works in that, in that, um, scenario. But yeah, no, I I I agree with you. Um, yeah, maybe we'll have to rethink that. It was just an idea I had based on.
Is there any, is there any way to possibly like, I I'm just thinking back to my childhood and we always got. You know, in the elementary school and maybe even middle school, you always got flyers that meant nothing to the kids. But they were for all the parent information. So, and I don't know, I mean. For the high school kids, if you put it on an app or you give them something to do with their phone, they're gonna look at it, if it, you know, but. Talking to an adult not on their high priority, their friends or their, you know, the peer groups are the most important at this point, so. Um, or if they have to do it for a class or something like that, that would be a way to get them to participate, I think, but. The, you know, if there's a way to somehow, you know, you know, put a flyer. Or have teachers hand out flyers or something for their, you know, their, uh, I forget their first class, their homeroom class, whatever they, I forget what they call it now, but. Um, if there's some way we can kind of just, you you know, use that. And I don't know how to get into that, but I'm just saying that would be a way to get the flyers, because everybody's kids are going to school. And if they get a flyer, you know, and say, hey, go to this website and fill this, I mean, maybe that's a way to, you know. Basically, reach all the the school age kids.
And they have backpack stuff and then things that the board has has definitely said that they will do for us as as soon as they get materials. So some of this just is. Is getting the materials out.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea. And yeah, Abby, if we have, you know, we, and Abby and Mark, we can kind of work on, you know, what that material to them is. Um, and, you know, as long as we have a contact, we can reach out to and 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 get that. That would be great.
Okay, any, any other questions? All right, I think we're, anything else from you, Rory?
No, I think that's it. I think as long as you guys are okay, um, you know, kind of meeting again, you know, getting back to it in January. Um, but again, like I said, we can provide Mark with a couple of slides to just, you know, update, hey, this is, you know, what what the numbers are. This is what we've been doing. Um, kind of in the interim, and, you know, we'll be working toward, you know, getting these interviews done, um, and, you know, Abby. And Mark will share out kind of the list of who we're thinking those stakeholders are, and you guys can please provide and chime in and. Give us some feedback so we can start doing that. That'd be great. And I think we're good. And everybody have a nice fall and a holiday season and.
Great, we'll try to get those right back to you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you. Can we, um? There we go. Okay. Uh, so that's it for number four. Item number five, administrative review. Do we have anything for that?
We have nothing.
Uh, number six, correspondence, any?
None, no.
Okay, item number seven, commission business. I think maybe that was, uh, Abby's announcement that we did earlier.
Yep.
Okay, that's good. So when's our next meeting?
Next meeting is the fifteenth, November.
Okay.
That's the public hearing, don't forget for the, uh, and it's gonna be an in-person, in the auditorium, that's the public hearing for the reg.
Okay, great. Item number eight. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Ken. Seconded by, uh, Karen. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Good night, thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Hey, Mark, before you check off, or Abby? Um, do I need to, uh, touch base with you tomorrow or?
There's no. I'll, I'll check in, I'll check in with Rob and find out where the appointments stand and and just, you know, kind of see if it's up on the next agenda for the Board of Selectmen, and if it's not. Um, you know, we'll leave you, I'll I'll put you and Greg and Rob in touch, you guys can have that conversation. But typically, it it just winds its way onto the next, um, next agenda. So I will talk to them about that tomorrow morning.
And the only reason is because of the public hearing being on the fifteenth, and my appointment ends on the fourteenth, and I don't want anything to get crossed up, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, the town, the town attorney has previously applied that even if your term ends, if no one else is appointed to that seat, you can continue to serve. It's been upheld, it's perfectly fine.
Okay.
I get it, but it's 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 better to have the the logistics away, so I will make sure that happens.
Appreciate it. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye.
Yeah.